Please rise, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic.
As a preliminary matter, this is Jeff Swanberg, Chair of the Select Board. Good evening. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted via Zoom. Speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and the Chair may allow for the public to provide comment. The Select Board would like to hear public comments and if there is further action as required by the Board, the Chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the Board may, if they are able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees, unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on Board Docs and we recommend that members of the public follow along the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless I note otherwise. We are now going to turn to the first item of the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. The Chair will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motion. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair taking care to identify yourself. And for items of public comment, after the members have spoken, the Chair may afford public comments. Only once the Chair has had a list of all public commentators I would call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person per open meeting law. We will now turn to the first item on the agenda, which is public comments. Would like to hear any public comments and if there's further action as required by the Board, Chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. And so I will start as I always do and open up the public comments in the room. Yes?
Hi, my name is Deb Musal and I live on Grant Street. And I'm here tonight to thank everyone of you in the back here for taking care of my friends. And including my former students who are already here. Yeah, always proud of you in Maynard, always. And seeing what happened and how well you have saved my friend's life, I just wanted to let you know from the bottom of my heart that I truly appreciate it. Thank you for everyone.
Great, and we'll, we'll be talking more about that as soon as we're finished with the remainder of the public comments. Any other public comments in the room? And are there any public comments online this evening? Very good, so we will move on to item number four, which is a life-saving award. I'll invite Chief Noble and where, where Chief Wallace to come on down to the front. Good evening. I, Greg, would you like to turn this over or should we go right to the two Chiefs? All right, fantastic. So we are here to recognize several of our firefighting and police officers for saving the life of a person who was right here in the room in front of us. And we're all very proud. And so I'll just turn it right over to Chief Noble and to Chief Wallace.
Thank you. It's always good to be when something like this happens. And it is offices invited by the recognized, but just the work they do. But when they go above and beyond in something that is truly something for all, I think it'd be recognized, you know, in part. So I'll give a brief commendation on, on the actions of the personnel on that day. On April 8th, 2023, 11:10 AM, dispatch to 911 call reporting a male having trouble breathing and turning red. Sergeant Manjusso, after Eric, the fall, after Kristen Gates, were all dispatched for his team. On arrival, officers found William Doyle in a critical medical situation. They immediately assessed Mr. Doyle and found a faint pulse, however, within moments is high fever. All officers immediately began CPR and acted in units in surrender care. Within a few minutes, made a fire department arrive. Captain John King, firefighter James McDowell, firefighter Mark Latta, firefighter Jack Premiano, firefighter Angel Hansen. And officers can fire fighters continue CPR, including tracking Mr. Doyle with the AED, which is an automatic sternovotator. Paramedics arrived and took over treatment of Mr. Doyle in the fire department, transferred Mr. Doyle to Emerson Hospital. Sometime during this critical care, Mr. Doyle's heart was restarted and he was breathing on his own again. The officers then assisted Mr. Doyle's wife with transport to the hospital and stayed until public family members were The staff at Emerson Hospital advised he was going to survive only due to the quick response and quality care provided by the Maynard Police Department. Correct me if I'm wrong, we have plaques for each person. And I'll be followed up your name, come up, receive your plaque. Chris Manjusso, doctor? People might not understand CPR, and that maybe five to seven percent of the time actually worked. You know, that saves a life, even with your best efforts, it doesn't work. So I did time, I'd like to give Will, let's say a few words.
Three past seven years, I've had the opportunity to get to know one of the police officers and firefighters through sanctuary. And the one thing I could never imagine was that you guys would be in my house. And that it actually did my life. And you know, the, what I've learned about what you guys did and the percentage that I had to live through everything and the incredible effort you guys put in. It's just, it's overwhelming. I can't thank you enough. My life is still going. I've got a lot to do. Thank you so much for that second opportunity. I can't again, thank you enough. Thank you.
And Chief, do you even believe representative Hogan, would you like to say anything?
I just wanted to present to Maynard Fire and Maynard Police from Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, in recognizing your quick heroic and life-saving actions during a response to a medical incident, as well as your empathy and commitment to the residents of Maynard. You really mean it. We're really grateful. Go, Will. Thank you, Mr. The opportunity.
One more. Everybody still here must be for the poll installation hearing. All right. Well.
And yeah, do that next.
Should we, yeah, should we jump to that? All right. And I believe we have our, the Eversource representative here. Yeah. Hello?
This is Christine Cosby from Eversource.
Good, how are you this evening? We're about to start the hearing, just want to make sure you're with them.
Yes, thank you.
All right, very good. Notice is hereby given in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 166, that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 6th, 2023, at 7:15 PM via hybrid meeting, both in person at 195 Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, 01754, and remotely via Zoom per the posted Maynard Select Board Meeting Agenda's instructions. The petition and plan are being presented by the N-Star Electric Company, doing business as Eversource Energy and Verizon for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location to install one pole, number 60 slash 11B, to provide electric service to guard back US government FEMA, Old Marlboro Road, Maynard. A copy of this petition is filed with the town clerk and Select Board Office. And so I will, do I have to do what we'll call to open the public hearing, or we were simply open right now? So, look, sorry, no, you're all right, very good. So the public here is open. We do have a motion. And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Could you repeat that for me one more time, please?
This is Christine Cosby from Eversource Energy.
Christine, welcome this evening. Could you give us an explanation of what the request that we're looking at is?
Yes, we're requesting a grant of location for the installation of new pole, pole 60 over 11B, and on Old Marlboro Road. And the purpose of this new pole would be to provide the new, a new service, underground service to the US government FEMA, there's a guard shack, a guard station. And this would be provide the electric service to the guard station.
Which is not currently have, does not currently have service?
No.
Okay. Okay. Kind of minister, you have?
No, I mean, it's, so we, we saw some, they look on the buttons, we have getting issues.
No objection from the department heads? All right, very good. Any questions from the Board?
Um, no, I don't think.
David? No, I'm familiar with the guard check and I'm familiar with the pole location and I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Okay. Yeah. All right, before I go to the public, any other questions from the Board?
No.
All right, we'll start with individuals in the room. Are there any comments? Since this is a public hearing from people in the room tonight. All right, and we'll go online. Are there any comments from the public hearing about the pole installation from those online this evening? Hearing none. There is a motion in front of us. There are no questions. I will entertain the motion.
I will move to approve a grant of location to install one pole, number 60 slash 11B, to provide electric service to guard back US government FEMA, Old Marlboro Road, Maynard. The petition and plan is being presented by the N-Star Electric Company, doing business with Eversource Energy and Verizon for the purpose of obtaining a grant of location, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Chris?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yeah.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, thank you, Christine. And all.
Thank you.
Yep, to close the public hearing with the time.
We want to close the public hearing at 7:45 here.
Second.
All in favor, Chris?
Yeah.
Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Very good. We will now return to item five, if you're following on, on Board Docs, which is our consent agenda. We have two items. One is the extension from premises, part of the outdoor dining program from Smack Noodle. And then the other, did we get approval for the asset yet?
We have not received, we have never received.
So then we'll accept the motion only on A, which is the extension of premises for Smack Noodle. Unless there are any questions on that one item. Okay.
Move to approve the consent agenda, item A, presented, we're not providing the use of digital signatures approved.
All in favor? Very good.
Before we move on, Mr. Chair, Greg, I saw, it was online, photographs of some tables and chairs that are out front of another business on Main Street. Not that it's a big deal, but I thought that there was a requirement that any use of public space sidewalk, unless there's a little bit of an evenment there that belongs to the needs approval from us before it goes through. Not that it would ever be denied, but I think it was, what's the place, the pizza place?
Pizza Express, I believe.
Pizza Express. And I just want to make sure that it's done on the up and legal and everything else. Can we check just to make sure that? You know, can we have a couple of tables out and a couple, two chairs at each table, not a big deal. I just want to make sure that it's all done properly.
I, I just maybe misunderstanding, we'll, we'll try.
Yeah, I wouldn't presume we would approve anything. I think that a lot of pre-work done before it gets to us to make sure there's not obstruction for the sidewalks and things like that. It's not, it is not a given for the program and the reason we're able to approve Smack Noodle so quickly is because when it comes to the consent agenda, it's essentially the same design that we've approved at. But that first year when we instituted that, there were a lot of, a lot of considerations to make sure that we weren't blocking the flow of pedestrian traffic, that it was ADA compliant, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, but we did have, prior to COVID, when whatever it was called at the time there on the corner, had tables and chairs out in front. We never had any issues. It was just, we made sure that it was appropriate with the police, fire, with everybody that needed to be there. We didn't have any formal approval other than just knowledge that it existed. And I think part of it was that it was public, that it was private property versus public property, et cetera. I don't know. But I just want to make sure we're doing it right so that nobody feels offended or that somebody else doesn't start and suddenly we have tables all over the place. We don't know that they're going up.
Right, they may not be familiar with that. All right, we could call it David. Moving on to item six, we have appointments and we're starting with the Board of Assessors. Brad Schultz, who I believe is joining us online. Can you hear Mr. Schultz?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great.
Hello.
Good evening. We have your application in front of us, but could you briefly introduce yourself and explain your interest in the position?
Yes, my name's Brad Schultz. I've been a property owner here in Maynard since 1998. And I currently serve on the Board of Appeals. And I have enjoyed, thank you for your appointment to that. This is my first term sir in there. And I also I, you know, have further interest in how the town gets its revenue. And I'd like to make sure that 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 revenue process is, you know, is, is followed according to law. And I'm sure it is. I just would like to be a part of that. And I, there's been a, an absence in the, in that volunteer position for, for quite a while. And I think it fits very well with my property I own or property I own here in Maynard. And I, I think it's the thing that's important because it's a very important revenue stream to the town of Maynard. And as a resident, I would have skin in the game. So I would like to make sure that, you know, everything is, that I represent Maynard properly.
Okay, I'll open it up to the Board for questions.
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna ask, do you have doubts that it's not being done properly? That question, the, the way you introduce yourself, I just, it just led me to.
No, I just, I, I've just looked, as, as a member of zoning board, I've looked at properties online because we, you know, we look at, you know, people that are you know, put on decks in their houses or, you know, extensions of their houses and things like that. And I've looked at the property cards and I found them to be completely inaccurate. So I've had to go to the town and look at property cards or the plot plans to find out some of the information. So I found that it's not, the information that's given to the public that's online from the subcontractor Patriot, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know their, their name completely, isn't necessarily accurate. So I sort of question sometimes whether the properties are evaluated correctly. Although I know that's not part of the, you know, of the the job description of, of, of the, you know, of what, what, what I would be doing. But I would be questioning now and try to understand, you know, better about how property values are obtained and what our subcontractors are doing. We take that information to try to, you know, the correct tax evaluation of our properties.
That's fair. I've spoken to Chief Assessor Ripley, his new, new, relatively new, and new mayor. And he kind of shares a similar scrutiny over, over the information that we have with Patriot Properties. They're the contractor we've got, we've got with Patriot all the time and many, many towns do, they're very common. So he is also interested in sort of like evaluating the accuracy of what, what he's been presented.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Your question is, do you see any potential conflict interest Brad in a member of the Board of Assessors also joining as a member of the zoning board, zoning board of appeals?
No, I don't. I think that both of these things are, I'm here to serve and will help the town of Maynard. I, I don't really see much interaction between the two other than the fact that you would, or the zoning board would
Absolutely.
approve a, you know, a, a variance or a you know, a special permit. But I'm not sure exactly how that would follow through to change or, you know, follow through to the, you know, the effect of what is, happens with the assessors. And obviously, you know, the, are interacting or interrelated because eventually one will get the information from the other. I assume, I mean, I, I have no idea of the, of the Board of Assessors actually works. So I don't know how the property values get changed on, on a house or a property or a commercial property for that matter. That's why I'm here to learn and try to understand that, that process.
And there's a, there's a certification that he has to take, right?
Yeah, that's why it's difficult to build Board of Assessors.
Yes.
It has, you know, there's more expectations and more requirements to serve on it. So I'm, I'm grateful to have Mr. Schultz's volunteerism. I think it's a good point to even print. I don't, I'm not aware of any.
I just, you know, I picked up to Brad.
Yeah.
How they, how they both work and how they work together or not together is kind of the, the point of the question, more than, more than the question is of you're going to be having a conflict or creating a conflict, it's more, how do they, how do they come together altogether?
I made a note, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna paint in town council just to see if there's any advice on it.
Justine, do you feel your first question was that?
Yes, yeah.
David?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we want to make a motion?
Sure. Move to appoint Brad Schultz to the Board of Assessor with a term starting July 1st, 2023 and expiring June 30th, 2026.
Okay.
Authorizing use of digital signatures.
Second.
As amended, all in favor? Thank you for the question. Very good. Mr. Schultz, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next is the Board of Registered. We have three individuals, one from each of the two major parties and then our town clerk. Do you want to give an overview of the?
Sure. So the town clerk, Diane, Diane, it's, it's procedural, it's more housekeeping. It's because we noted public content for, for her to be appointed to Board of Registered. However, the other two, which you noted, Janice Jones and Robert Morrell, Mr. Morrell said you're and I don't see anyone that I don't recognize, I guess, Ms. Jones is here, don't use. No?
Please.
Anyway, so, so they each represent, as you said, the few major parties, Democrat Party and Republican. And there's correspondence from those two just to represent endorsement from those. And so I'm, I'm grateful to have their volunteers.
Dad, would you like to say anything tomorrow?
No, I, I'm interested in learning more about the process and how voting is done in Maynard and I want to do what I can to make the process as thorough as possible and easier for all of both who've been doing it for many years in any way I can.
All right, thank you. Any questions on any of these?
No.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll, do you want to do all three?
Well, so two of them have different, the town clerk is indefinite appointment, so.
Let's, let's do them one at a time.
All right, move to appoint Janice Jones to the Board of Registered with a, with a term sta- starting July 1st, 2023 and expiring June 30th, 2026, authorizing use of digital signatures. Can I stop for one second?
You may.
It just occurred to me though, that she's not online.
She's not what?
We, we don't, we are, we not being here at all.
No, but.
Is that typical?
I know, yeah, and I happen to have been at the meeting that this whole thing was discussed at the Democratic Town Committee when she, you know, offered to step up. I, I don't think, I thought there was going to be heavy lifting involved.
No, no, it's more that I just, I want to make sure that we're appointing some, a lot of times we don't appoint someone we don't know. So if you, if you know her.
Also present and also know her and can, can vote her for character.
Okay, so. Some, to tell them a second.
I don't, all right, very good. The first motion has been made and seconded for the appointment of Janice Jones, all in favor? Very good.
I will move to appoint Robert Morrell to the Board of Registered with a term starting July 1st, 2023 and expiring June 30th, 2026, authorizing use of digital signatures approved.
All in favor? Very good.
And I will move to appoint town clerk Diane Reardon to the Board of Registered for an indefinite term, authorizing use of And I will move to appoint town clerk Diane Reardon to the Board of Registered for an indefinite term, authorizing use of digital signatures approved.
All in favor. Very good. And uh. Do all three need to be sworn in and if so, it's worse than. I'm assuming that the town clerk can do that. So very good. So you'll need to swear in at town hall during normal business hours.
Or Tuesday night.
That'll be even.
Thank you. All right, uh, appointment sixty, we have a list of reappointments to various boards and committees. I am going to ask that we vote on the Board of Health appointments separately. Is there anybody else who would like to do a separate? Discussion or vote for any of the members on the reappointments?
Yeah. Here's my question, does, so like Justin DiMarco and, and other, Justin, sorry. Um, does he have to be, so there are other people who aren't, um. On the list for like the Green Meadow Building Committee. Is that just because their term isn't up yet? Of course, because they're.
I have not heard back from everybody yet. Yeah.
Okay.
Ideally, we wanted to build a, allow the board to have two meetings before the end of the term, but by the end of June. Um, but as Greg said, we really, this is the names we have so far.
Okay.
So it's safe to assume that if someone's not on here, that's because their term isn't expired.
Or they didn't.
They didn't let us know they wanted.
So, so when you green metal school building community, there's only five or six, there's one to people, eight names.
Yeah.
But is. Because you have a referendum or because they're. Okay.
And a couple more names came in today, but.
Okay, I was just, I was just noticing that particular committee is light on the moon, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Uh, so I will move to reappoint the board and committee members that's provided accepting the Board of Health appointment and authorized use of digital signatures if approved. All in favor. All right, um, I do not feel I can vote for the. Appointment to the Board of Health. Um, I think the professionalism I expect during pandemic is, is the main reason. And I think if people wanted to revisit that conversation, they. Uh, you can see that online and, and understand my thinking behind that particular issue. But I'll entertain any other discussion on that particular point if somebody would like to say something.
Uh, I don't, I don't have a problem reappointing her. Um, I. I. I, um, had opportunity to listen to the meetings, the very beginning of the pandemic, throughout the pandemic. After the pandemic, um, I think she, um. I think she's down to earth with certain things and sometimes when you speak in a way. That is. Is in that way, sometimes it doesn't, maybe you're not speaking. As political, as you're speaking more matter of fact, and sometimes that can be taken the wrong way. Um, so that's just my own personal opinion. Um, I don't, I don't have a hesitation if she's interested in continuing on. I don't have a hesitation with her continuing on board.
Any other comments? David, all right, I will move to reappoint Lisa Thua to the Board of Health. And authorize use of digital signatures if approved. All in favor? All opposed? All right. We will move on to item eight, which is an update from the Regional Housing Services Office. Welcome.
In person.
In person.
Would it be here?
Sure, absolutely. And, and the, the microphone is right up here in the owl to just, if you're projecting, yeah, that's a deep point way.
No, that's a.
As long as. We should be fine.
Okay.
Um, if you could please introduce yourself and then we can.
I'm the Director of the Regional Housing Services Office. And I am here to give you an update from the R H S O and to see if you're interested in authorizing the town manager to. Sign the intermunicipal agreement for the next three year term. Um, so the Regional Housing Services Office is a, so you have a lot of material in your. In your packet. I didn't know if you wanted to go through any of that specifically, rather than just, you know, do an overview of this.
Overdue.
Overview, okay, so.
There is, there's a presentation.
It's out there and people want to look at it, right? So the Regional Housing Services Office was started in two thousand and eleven. And it's a, a regional collaboration of ten communities now started, uh, where we just added native for this particular term. Um, so we're up to ten communities and we've been able to do that because we've had some additional staff and capacity in the office. Um, so they are Acton, Bedford, Concord, Lexington, Lincoln, Maynard. Native, Sudbury, Weston and Wayland. Um, and, uh, we're hosted by the town Concord, so they do all the procurements and we do all of ours. So it's a procurement, it's a facilitated computer, uh, procurement process for you all for the number of communities. You don't need to RFP, you don't need to do anything special to get those services and that's by nature of the intermunicipal agreements. That's how it works. Um, so you buy in for the housing services. There are five people in the office. So it's a very efficient way for you to buy in for technical expertise. You have, um, you know, me as the director, we have a rental specialist. Who ran the leasing department, which is in sector eight for Somerville Housing Authority for many years. We have someone who specializes in homeowner and resident services, who's worked in that field for fifteen years. Someone who was a planning director in Land Use for a neighboring community for a couple of decades. So you're able to buy into those skill sets for, for the bargain price of. Thirteen, three, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Thirteen, three, twenty-four, right? Um, so, uh, so it's very efficient like that. I mean, I, I make light of it, but you wouldn't be able to. Get one consultant that has all of that expertise or, or a staff person or something. And, and, uh, we offer whatever services towns are interested in. So some communities have very extensive services and some have less. So you could see, um, so Maynard has a three percent of our total, uh, two hours offering. And Sudbury goes up to, um, twenty-three percent. So there's any kind of range there. So the kind of things that we focus on for Maynard is we're here for any new projects that come up and new developments that are being proposed. Our cornerstone or our, our core function is to really look after the existing or the housing units. So we need to, that's like key to, to make sure that they're compliant with all their prescriptions. So the new income limits just came out, so we're working with the property managers to make sure that the rent requests that they're, that they're making are, are. You know, appropriate and, and, uh, you know, so we help with that and we, um. Help the, uh, housing trust with their rental assistance program and any other thing that comes up around those services. Um, and it's a three-year intermunicipal agreement. It was designed to, to amend every year now so that every community proactively reengages. So I think that the founders wanted to be sure it wasn't just sign up and then it just kind of rips along. But that every year you have an opportunity to hear what's going on with the program and then to proactively sign up. And I think that's part of its effect is that it has sponsorship and visibility at the highest leadership levels of all the member communities.
Okay. Trying to administer anything to Ed?
No, I, I very much appreciate you coming tonight. Um, and the partnership that, or actually the reliance on the R H S O town has is invaluable. But they, they're very responsive, but more than that, they are actually, um. Attentive beyond and what we're capable of. That's really what they advise. They tell us, as, as she pointed out, that, you know, income level will change. And that we, and so they'll just kind of let us know and I'll give, of course, consent that they are reaching out to those various landlords or, or any other entities. Um, so in that regards, in addition to that initiative, that the, the housing trust and that they're able to support for those really. Great need that, that town staff is not able to give to those people who need that rental assistance. Um, so I've been grateful to, to have her presence and her team's presence. Um, not on a daily basis, but, um, but, you know, all along the way in the planning and whatever new projects come along. We always know the R H S O, they're gonna be right there with us.
Any questions from the board?
I have one, it's not an important one. Where are you guys at? Where do you?
We have an office, um, that's in with the, um. It's, it's a, the town Concord office, but it's actually in Acton. It's by the stuff and shop there with the school buses. So there's the transportation building. I mean, there's some other offices there, so we're in the second floor. It's thirty-seven knots trail.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just say, I would echo Greg's comments, uh, from the housing trust perspective. Some of the programs that we've talked about doing, Liz has always been on board helping us. And without the assistance, we wouldn't have been able to get some of these programs bought. Uh, furthermore, um, as my colleagues know, I'm a somewhat of a local government nerd. I saw you on television in Acton doing the same presentation.
Last night.
Last night, no. So, uh, I didn't need to hear the presentation because I, I had heard it last week. So, thank you again for you and your team for the effort that you put on, uh, on our behalf.
I'll just say that we're, we're in a housing crisis in Massachusetts right now and so support services like these and making sure that we're maintaining the existing stock. That we do have, but affordable housing is, uh, critical and stuff. Oh, and my thank you.
Like, I mean, that's, that's, that's really the most important part is because there are things that we can't keep on top of.
Yeah.
You know, so, so the fact that, that the housing office is here to assist us with that part of it. Um, it's huge.
All right, any other comments or questions? All right.
I will move to approve the town administrator to sign the intermunicipal agreement, I M A, for the Regional Housing Services. Office, our H F O, with an expiration date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, next we have the Department of Public Works, a presentation on water capacity, which we got a, a bit of a preview on the discussion. At, at the pride board meeting recently.
Yes.
Welcome.
Evening. DiMarco, for direct here, I will try and make most of my heavy-handed agenda concise, short to the point. By. All you. Um, so, so as Jeff, Jeff has alluded to, I wanted to provide the board specifically with the water commissioners with an update. Based on some recent development. In regards to development, I mean, three different phases of development. When we're talking about water within town Maynard, we're talking about demand, which is a situation where growth in communities such as new developments. Similar situation like one fifteen Main Street, Man and Crossing, et cetera. Like to keep the board abreast to the understanding of the impacts of the potential of the man and growth on our water system. Uh, within this memo that takes into account all of the planning aspects that have come in front of us, some of them are conceptual, some of them are. Uh, are in current realization and others are already on boarded with the capacity, uh, of our, of our, uh, of our. Water system. Number two is based off of the updates and the progress that we're moving on as a utility in the community. Um, with some of our, uh, capital improvements that address our, so specifically well for in the treatment plant process where we are. How we're getting there and how that impacts, um, our current, um, demands and future development demands. Um, and then the third is always the one that is actually ramping up when we're talking about water, public drinking water utilities. Is, uh, consistent policy change with contaminants, um, and allowances which is public drinking water. Specifically PFAS is one of the biggest ones, as you've also heard. In recent conversations, um, led in public drinking waters and we've discussed a little bit of what's happening. That's a situation that is a little bit more isolated, but, um, due to federal and state mandates, the water utility is. After solving a problem on private property, um, when we're talking about PFAS, that is a public drinking water that is, um. That is politically and permanently.
Natasha, you're, uh, not on you.
Please continue.
To reduce the chemical, which is technically a manmade chemical that has interfered with a significant amount of public drinking water. Uh, utilities across the country in the world. This is the global pandemic situation in regards to contamination of drinking water sources. Not a localized situation, um, the federal government is, um. Changing their regulations in each state either adopting or makes those more strict. But that is a dynamic ever-changing situation as it's developing, it will have a localized impact. And our treatment plants were never detected global PFAS chemical from that process and there was never a contaminant identified that. Um. So with that being said, this memo is an update, um, as we try to consistently update the board. When we're talking about our master plan in regards to Maynard's public drinking water, um, without going into too much detail. We have a significant capacity problem within the town of Maynard that inhibits growth. Um, we need major investment in our system that comes on the back of our residents who are actually our customers. Roughly forty-three hundred customers are paying for an isolated system. And when I say isolated system, when our regional system. And within that isolated system, we have three treatment plant processes that, um, produce. Raw water into clean drinking water and we distribute it to all of our customers. That comes on the back of forty-three. Water utilities and managing water and a public drinking water capacity is not a cheap endeavor. It is a very expensive endeavor and it is ramping up as contaminant levels. And manmade products are starting to be reduced out of public drinking water sources. We will have to react and we have to react quickly. Unlike most other communities, that's not our biggest constraint, water capacity. Constricting, pumping water into our system and supplying our customers with the proper water is our highest priority. Without that, chemical mitigation means nothing because water is not coming out of the faucet. So as you know, we've, we've hammered this home, um, consistently, specifically within my four years. We highly focused on a financial plan within our water and sewer rates. We have long-term forecasts and we've been strategically planning to increase our water capacity. Um, one of the other new events that was brought up to the board, uh, introduced to the board at the tri board meeting. Is the possibility of regionalization with, um, the Massachusetts Water. Authority, um, MWRA, and that potential is, um, something that Maynard has been involved with intimately. With our regional partners in the Metro West area that includes communities such as Concord, Acton, Sudbury, Bedford, Naatic, Hudson, Stowe, et cetera. It's a large, it's a large collaboration. Uh, we're looking to acquire the potential to have the decision built into MWRA. Which could solve, um, a significant amount of managed water issues in regards to capacity and water quality. So as that progresses, the board will be informed. We are awaiting a final report that MWRA is putting together that is anticipated to be released at the end of June. I anticipate more like the middle of. So deadlines are always one thing and then. Then to get in the way, um, I will submit the report in a brief, um, memo in regards to what that means. Um, as part of our, uh, localized aspect of the public drinking water system. Um, but this was just really an update as the board start to consider growth, new growth, zoning changes, things like that. Just making sure that it is strategically planned within our approach. Our water system cannot continue to be reactionary. It should be proactive and then growth should be reactionary off of that. Um, that is a strong strategic plan, um, and I have no problem taking guidance and timeline expectancy. Of where our centralized focus is in the future as the tri board continues to meet and as the select board and as the water commissioner is set. Are using goals, um, we'll listen, we'll take that in and we can always adjust our paint, our plans longer, shorter, et cetera.
Did you cover the PFAS considerations of the MWRA versus the groundwater sources? I don't know. Did you speak to that or did I just miss?
Nope. Great question. So I kind of spoke to it with water quality.
I, I know you spoke to it at the tri board.
Yeah, it's more of, I just kind of glossed over water quality. So technically right now MWRA does not violate state, uh, minimal containment levels. And or EPA's projected contaminant levels. So technically we would reduce the need for mitigation. Now, when we get into details as we start to communicate with, if MWRA is a potential. We would, uh, we would put together feasibility study of the mapping of our system, our capabilities with MWRA. What I would not forsake Maynard to do is completely abandon our assets. I would look for a blended situation. Uh, with that blended situation still put us in a situation where we would have to treat our localized sources for PFAS. But we would weigh that fiscal option in a, in a full-on study of feasibility, meaning. Is it based on whatever the lease agreement is for purchased water? So we'd be purchasing water similar to how we purchase electricity and gas from a third party, which is MWRA. So we'd be purchasing water similar to how we purchase electricity and gas from a third party, which is M W R A. Then comes at a cost per unit. So it come at a cubic foot cost. Whatever that cubic foot cost is versus our operation, we will weigh that in feasibility study. And we may end up looking at the potential of abandoning our assets, but I don't believe that's one hundred percent.
Anything else before I open to the board for questions? Then I will open it up to the board for questions.
No, but seven years is comes on fast. So one question is what. Anticipated involvement would there be, if any? From the legislative meeting, town meeting or executive, meaning not Greg, but the.
Yes.
Select the board.
Yeah.
At the water commissioners. Towards this process and when would we begin to have really serious discussions relative to yes? You know, I know that there's the grander scheme that we the state has to basically say, yes, we're inviting you in.
Yeah.
That's step one. And then once we get there, what type of what type of involvement do you believe? That this board as water commissioners, town meeting have to have to approve things?
Yeah.
And what is the timeline for that? So we're prepared for the the steps along the way. And I'm sure every community that's going to be involved in this discussion is going to have the same thing. So we'll have other partners in it. But just so we're aware what the.
Correct. So technically, the seven year window is based off the projection, the excuse me, the projections that M W R A has for implementation of infrastructure. Within that seven year window, that's where the communication starts. Post the report that I just indicated. The final report is a feasibility study M W R A has put in. We're not the only region that consider. So technically, M W R A has about twenty million gallons a day of water that's treated that they give her. They just dump it down the drain and re-treat it. So their excess capacity and they're looking to sell. There has been two other regions that have approached M W R A for a very long time, which is the which is the North Door and the South Door. Just pretty much just outside the one twenty eight belt, North Door and just outside the one thirty eight belt, South Door. So pre K. Those communities have been lackluster when when coordinated in a regional situation. And they're very far away from the M W R A system, meaning it's very, very costly for M W R A to supply them. Metro West has been engaged now for about a year roughly, tentatively. In the understanding of, we weren't aware that M W R A was even approaching other communities with excess capacity. Once we figure it out, I will give credit to actually Justin Botts and how Death Guard and Conquerors really, really led the way on this. But the Metro West coordination, we as DPW directors localize and have a really good relationship. So once we heard about this, we started organizing and we've actually made exponential gains over our regional competitors. Because we're very organized and our approach is very sound. We have a lot of experienced utility superintendents within this region. That truly understand the short term, mid term, long term. Where unfortunately North Door and South Door are kind of mixed back. They don't really know what they want. So we've, we've really heavy handed M W R A and we are hoping that in the final report that the most advantageous approach is to the Metro West. I will tell you that we are surrounded by a significant amount of communities that have M W R A connection, only one or two towns away. We're not far outside their realm. Marlboro has it. If you go down Route nine, just chase it. It's only Sudbury that's in our way potentially from everywhere south of that location. So. This is a from an infrastructure, common sense physical approach. Metro West is the more advantageous. Now, I will also tell you that I have extreme communications ads of all the DPW directors. And Greg's been informed of progress as we've gone along with our local reps. So Kate Hogan is well aware of this. She also runs the P G, the lead on the PFAS subcommittee, but she's well aware she actually engaged her other community still in Hudson. Because they weren't aware of the situation. So we talked, you know, even without going into too much detail, I talked to Kate about. How Maynard can work as a region. But we also don't need to let someone else dictate what we need. We need it now. Other communities may need it in five years. So Stowe, Hudson have issues and they can connect through Marlboro in this direction. Sudbury doesn't necessarily have issues, but Sudbury is different. There are water districts versus the town. The town owns the property that by trying to come through, even if the water district doesn't want to hook up. So we've been, I know this is a big conversation on the state level and Alan has actually represented the Metro West region at the federal level in Washington. So the reason that M W R A is really approaching this right now is because of all the better funding. And federal funding goes to regionalization process, something that the state of Massachusetts thoroughly lacks. In multiple generations and I think this is the first time that they've really looked at it from, let's get all that IRA money to pay for the infrastructure. We require new customers and this is to deal with the urban sprawl that we're we're seeing in the Metro West. We've been outside that one play out. Maynard's getting slapped with it every day. We are housing developments approaching us every day. We are housing crisis that is coming our way. This is the resolution.
Well, that's actually a good segue into my follow up and then all that. Justine asked a question. But the. The costs associated with, you know, you you I I chuckled when you said, you know, it's it's just one town over from Sudbury. But my understanding of water and sewer connections is like for each mile, it's like ten million dollars. It's some outrageous.
So they're losing money with treatable water that they're throwing down the drain and it's the ability like us when we use our Aqua Funds to actually take federal funds. And do something in our infrastructure that increases our capacity. So but just kind of, and I know I went on.
Well, my question, to my question associated with that is. When would we have to begin the process of planning relative to funding? You know, financial aspects of should we be invited or when we are invited, we have to have a plan to be right, ready to go.
Post the report, it will indicate all of this. So we were conceptually, nothing's in running. Or it would be in front of you. We conceptually were told by M W R A they're they're waiving all entrance fees for this twenty million gallons. And they are specifically targeting state.
That they're waiving all entrance fees?
Yes.
Including hookup?
Yep. So what the town will be on the book for is localized infrastructure to support whatever the plan is. But when we talk about conceptual design and planning for the town of Maynard and when you hear me say consistently that the old model treatment plan. Which is the dirty water that we see in that sort of town is a fifty to sixty million dollar plant without PFAS treatment. That's just for water capacity and the organics that we have to treat out of that. Well, when Jeff asked that question, we'll start to, as the details and the analytics start to transpire and M W R A starts writing up agreements. We'll review the cost measures and compare the cost, cost data analysis. So at that point, we'll be able to justify through a process that X costs this, Y costs this. What are long term gains? What are our approach? What's our strategic operational plan? What are our current assets, their age, etc.? How do we want to take them offline strategically and increase our M W R A process? So to answer your overall question as a whole, this is the start, David. The next step will be the final plan that we received from M W R A and their indication of their approach. And then from that point, I would engage the board and the community as a whole, as you heard me say in the tribe board meeting. Really engage our local legislators and understanding the impacts that that is for Maynard and what our vision as a community is. And then we'll continue to meet and most likely what will end up happening is we're not going to regionalize per se. So we're not looking for M W R A and we're not looking, we're looking for M W R A, but we're not looking to regionalize with Concord, Acton, Sudbury. We're regionalizing approach to M W R A, but we're going to have single agreements. So Maynard wants one point seven million gallons. What's the cost for that? We want it daily. We want to be able to have that daily. What's our impact? What's our infrastructure cost? If we have to support a pump station to increase our PSI to meet the minimum standards, blah, blah, blah. We'll have an agreement specifically with M W R A. And at that point, depending on what that threshold gap is, David, that would be presented to town meeting because it would most likely be out of. Your authority, but you would, we would bring that to town meeting with the assumption of the feasibility versus our assets versus M W R A. Overall projected cost, what that looks like and implications for the.
Forgotten that part. No, I don't. No, I'm good. I I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I I think one of the things that we've talked about before and I. I think you and I have talked about it is. There is a feeling sometimes that when you, when you give it to a third party, that you don't control the costs. But I think that what we're also seeing is, like you mentioned earlier tonight, having the costs depend on forty four hundred households. Is also very expensive. So, you know, I think that that's that's something that we're we're weighing.
And I will tell you, just based off that, every single DPW director and water superintendent that was part of this coalition. That is continually part of this coalition has specifically asked for M W R A's last ten years financially in their increased rate production. Because that's the comparison where our trend is versus theirs. Yeah, but that's the simple fact of what our projected trend is versus theirs. And to just each point, just so you have a general understanding. Like electricity and gas, we've been only purchasing water from them. We would still have to manage our distribution network. So our piping in the ground, we would phase out our treatment process. Per se, but over the course of ten, fifteen, twenty years, because some of those treatment plants, we're just putting eight million dollars in. So we're not going to necessarily abandon those. Over that time period, we can shift and increase our M W R A and reduce our reliance on our own internal assets. But then we can refocus the money that we're focusing on treatment back into our distribution network. And then that solves a lot of issues that we're not addressing as we speak right now. Most of our resource, if not ninety percent of our capital is going to the treatment. And what sorts.
Chris? Timing questions. When? Will we know? Is that part of that summer decision you were talking about if we? Yes.
So based off of, we really.
When when will be, when will we be able as a town to count on that connection? Let's let's put it that way.
Give you an accurate date. So we're waiting on the final document. None of us got to review the draft.
A year, two years.
Well, the documents due in July and at that point, depending on what the document reads, we have zero indication from M W R A that they're going to commit to. At that point, I will update the board based off of our review of the final draft. And then we should be able to maybe hone in on where that process is. I, the only indications and I can, I will give Justin Botts a lot of credit. Alan had raised, opened at them. Can we review the draft? When we add comment? They are one hundred percent closed door on what their approach is and what they're going, what they're going to put in their draft report. We do know one ask. They are well aware that Maynard wants it and wants it yesterday, per se, in theory. And we want to have that conversation. And they have included us in. Their phase one aspect of the Metro West expansion if they move.
Alright, but we don't know when the timing of that decision. So I mean, could we do this and then all of a sudden we don't hear back for three years? Is that?
Absolutely could. Yeah. So if if you look in the memo, it's theoretical.
Okay.
We don't have a direct yes or no from M W R A. I don't know if we will within, I I would.
You don't.
Yeah, this will pay within a year. I think at this point, they don't want to necessarily leave the IRA money.
Alright, so that's. Alright, very good. Let's, alright, now let's play that hypothetical where a year goes by and indeed it breaks our way. How long between that moment and when we would actually have water piped into town?
So that's the constructive estimation of seven years.
Okay.
So at that point, we would.
What are the error bars on that? Is really what I'm asking. We think.
What's that?
What are the error bars on that seven year window?
Thank you.
Okay, that's fine.
But we're. Web map, the corner, you know.
Yeah, absolutely. Are we, is this thing that could blow out in fifteen years? Is it something that could be done within five or are we?
So like anything, I look at, so the best way for me to gauge these things is I look at how state funding and federal funding has been. So offer needs to be spent on twenty point five. So if they're looking to use any other funds, they need to get.
Senter allocated.
Well, they can only, they can allocate it, but they can allocate it.
Right.
So I mean, that's, we'll see if they can. Maybe they can. They have bigger, bigger hands than we do as localized level when you're talking about state and federal government. But they're most likely attacking.
Alright.
Which will, that could be three, four or five years.
Okay, in the, let's assume in the meantime or that we don't get it. Could you talk about our capacity? I'm looking specifically at at slide five, which is your graph with the. Projections, which I think we reviewed three years ago.
Figure one, figure two or figure?
This is future, this is figure two. So future groundwater without the M W R A consideration. Explain the difference between the twenty forty five versus the current numbers, how we arrived at it.
So the twenty forty five projections are based off of all of the known assumptions when we're talking about growth. And or projects, which is indicated on.
It's one basically current zoning, if that was to be fully utilized, is that more or less what we're looking at there?
No, so we, we couldn't get that detail because that would be making a lot of assumptions. What we took into fact is we coordinated have the the planning department. So these are approaches developers who have either put in special permits, started the permit application for redevelopment. Or conceptually rarely engaged, meaning even B R S. They haven't put in a special permit, but they were really, really hot and heavy with consumption plans. So we have to account for those things as a potential theoretical aspect of growth. So all of those indication factors besides the two percent contingency, two percent contingency based off sentence growth. Outside of that, all of the future demand is based off the projects indicated in.
Okay.
I hope that clears.
That's good enough for me right now. Does this include the additional water source that we discovered recently within the last few years?
So O M R, so in figure two, if you look, so Rockland now is the first box.
Yep.
That is wells two, three and five. Those are our current wells that are online and new well source. New well source has not been permanent. It's conceptually thought of and it is actually indicated in.
Just to cut, that new discovery is the new well source in these charts here.
Well, I'm going to go through each treatment plant because there is actually multiple new wells. So kind of follow me with this one. So Rockland now, our current so sources that are active are two, three and five. If you go back to the four phase capacity, number two in our four phase capacity is actually Rockland's new well, not O M R's well.
Okay.
That new well conceptually has been indicated in figure two. Let's move now to the next box, which represents old mom or water treatment plant. Wells one and three. Technically, only well one is working. Well, three was taken offline due to coli and our treatment plant's ability to not treat for a coli. So that well is in existence, meaning it's permanent. We just can't use it because the treatment plant can't treat for it and the new well source. So in that box, it accounts for us changing the treatment plan to incorporate well three. And the potential of a new well source at O M R. And then you go to the next box, which is, excuse me, which is well four. Wells four is our existing well at treatment plant four, which is behind Father School. Well, four is the brand new source that we're putting online right now. We're literally drilling that well. We are implementing treatment processes, handling all that new source. That's right now. The reason that it was put in this scenario is that is a representation if we were to do all four of our phases of our four phase work group. Upgrades. We can break that down further and we can define it. I just didn't want to have us write like a thirty page memo. So this is really just like a high level approach. But just for general purposes, with all of those sources, at the end of the day. We would meet two thousand forty five's projected model. We would meet all redundancy requirements that we truly need, meaning we would be able to shut off wells, shut down treatment plants, rest them, allow for recharge. Proper recharge. But that is implementing all four phases. When you hear me say it's tribe board sixty million, all four phases almost likely cost close to eighty to hundred. When I say sixty million, I just mean old model.
Yep.
So this is when we start talking about M W R A and the potential of buying one point seven million gallons versus the potential of all these new well sources. Treatment plan upgrades to get roughly one point seven million gallons. That's what will weigh the consideration of of what's feasible financially. So I will say, and I I think the board has heard me say this multiple times, our new well source, well four A. Is a direct correlation to Maynard cross. It is not gaining that capacity. It's gaining that redundancy that we lost when we onboarded something prior to our capacity. So just for understanding, like when you start considering new growth and and the potential for zoning, well for A isn't adding us leverage. It's catching us up. If we're going to have that conversation, exploration of Brockland's new source and based off. The strategic planning, so if we're going to onboard. M W R A, I would focus heavily on Rockland and the new well source, not old model. Old Marlboro is the biggest cost where Rockland's treatment plant is our newest treatment plant. Has our least amount of PFAS residuals, our least amount of contaminants when we're talking about organics and is our most efficient system. At that point, if we're looking to twenty, thirty, forty, fifty years, phase out our assets. Rockland will most likely be our last that that faith though. That also allows us a little bit of control when we have to meet peak demand or if we're trying to like. Um, that also allows us a little bit of control when we have to meet peak demand or if we're trying to like incorporate something outside of M W R A lease agreement. Where we can somewhat reduce our costs. We used to do this in Marlboro. We had two, two sources. We won't, we were almost one hundred percent in M W R A and we had a uh. Uh, service large source. And we used to in our peak demand, almost similar electricity, we would run our cleaner. To offset the cost of M W R A. And then when we didn't need peak demand, we would rely one hundred percent on M W R A to often, to offset our peak demand. And then when you're talking about water, peak demand is some. So we did this so that we could sell water, meaning we didn't have water. Water restrictions hurt us financially. They help us operationally, but they hurt us financially. If I could sell water similar to Sudbury and just let. People irrigate all day long and have ten thousand dollar water bills and not care, that would be great for us because then we can reinvest in our system. We don't have that operational ability. But with M W R A and potentially our, our own phased in system, we could release these issues. M W R A typically, even in drought conditions, does not have a water restriction. So there is capital financing that we could actually incur with the allowance of outdoor waters.
Just to be clear, M W R A is the Quabin reservoir.
It is actually multiple reservoirs.
Um, which is the reasoning there. Um. And then my last question, does it make sense to delay any of this? Until we get news of whether or not an M W R A, or are we, or are we just building something that we may not need within a ten to twenty year timeframe?
We are still one hundred percent responsible to meet. The public drinking water standards of Massachusetts and EPA with our current system, no matter what the potential promises. We will work diligently to not. Waste funds in the long term strategically. I will tell you that well for eight is happening. It's absolutely happening. At this point. Those are projection models. So when you're talking about point three, five million gallons, that's what it's permitted at hypothetically and theoretically based on what it can pump. Until the system's online, we don't know if that's after. That could be point three, it could be point four. If it's point four, we're only permitting at point thirty five. So P D P does again. But if it's only point three, even though we're permitted, and I think you've heard me says before, if we can only pull so much from the straw, if that's the case. Well, adjust the numbers so that we have a real realization of what we're talking.
And we're still within the, the um, uh, the appropriate plan according to the D E P.
Yeah, okay, correct.
And when, I'm sorry, and you probably already said this, but when do you anticipate for A? I know they were drilling now, and and I know that there's work being done.
Yeah.
Seen that.
Yeah, no, that's okay. So for A, um, we're anticipating fall. Um, but what ends up happening, as you know, from the beginning phase, it's, it's heavily scrutinized from a permanent standpoint. The backend is as well. So once everything is in operation, D E P has to evaluate the treatment plant a lot before we actually open the valve. That there are distribution network. So sometimes the E P can get in the way of that, but I will tell you two different divisions. And they know that our operational requirements are really needed. So we do our due diligence very heavily. So it's. The only issue that we have is we blend our water. So that's a little bit more of the research that has to go in with the new sewer versus uh existing sources. What is that contamination in chem feed system look like? And then that's fine tuned in. Eventually, it's some, it's put into work.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, very good. Uh, thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
Um, I think you have a few items coming up. Next, we'll have the reserve fund transfer. So in ICE, I think we've talked about this uh several forms, including town meeting. Uh, basically, there's a. A gap between uh what free cash from town meeting was able to cover uh in terms of no ice. And so we are looking at a reserve. On transfer for the remainder, which is Jeff Shire sixty seven thousand dollars. Did I miss anything?
No, that's it. So the current balance of the reserve fund is two hundred thousand dollars. So and it starts in two fifty, so this is about one twenty um. Or one thirty, but either way, that's about average. We, we don't, we never deplete our reserve fund, which is ideal.
And this, this, this requires a income vote?
That's right, so I'll just say for endorsement.
Yeah, um, my question would be um from a purely a just a logistical or whatever standpoint. Is the, as the motion that is presented for consideration. Uh, it says move to approve the request. Isn't it actually just, is a motion even necessary for it? Secondly, isn't it just to acknowledge the fact that it's going because we do not have the right to block it?
Maybe move to endorse?
Well, yes, no, and we. Every year and I, and I don't, and I don't. But generally, I try to, I, I of course, I try to be the board informed and be transparent particularly.
Um, yeah, we're, we're supposed to have at least an understanding that it's going.
Yeah.
That's where in all this, we have no legal authority to block it. We have no legal authority to say, no, we have no legal authority for any.
That's not entirely true. You are the executive body. We do work for you. So if, if, if you had told us not to do this, then we, then we wouldn't do this. Um, like you, you sign warrants, right? So, so if you, if you did not authorize the expenses that we present to you, which Steve paid for, then we're off. I'm just, I know I'm getting into like.
Later, these are some hypotheticals here.
Yes. Either way, I, I like this practice. Uh, I, we could change the wording however you prefer. Um. Um, but I.
Well, I like the practice that it's coming to us to let us know. It's just, yeah, I just don't want it to appear that we are in any way approving anything.
You are correct. Finance committee, this is one of their powers, if you will, and, and, and. And appropriately, so yes, you're right. This is not, we are not telling the finance committee to authorize this. We are just sitting there, there. Yeah.
Um, so.
You like town meeting with that, it's like board recommends.
So the, the, the one question I have, and uh, this is more of like a budget question, and I know I brought it up before, but is there any? Possibility of reducing the amount of in the reserve fund.
Sure.
Moving forward.
Sure.
Um, just because I feel like we don't, like, like you said, so we're in, and I understand there's going to be some more at the end, at the end of the month, there could be some more reserve fund because we are a tight town. We are a tight budget. Um, but even if we could get fifty to this, fifty seventy five thousand dollars. More into the operating as opposed to just putting it back into free cash at the end of.
No, we, we played at this every year, but I, it makes me nervous every time because I'm worried that it's tempting to pay. It's going to be that one time we don't win two thousand dollars and. And we're going to need it.
We went for two years, I think at three hundred, and then we moved it back down to two.
Whoa, yeah, so I, I think two fifty. Sounds like a lot of money. Um, but we've had it two fifty for at least five years. So inflation alone should tell you that it should, nothing else probably will.
But I think we, I mean, I don't think we've spent more than a hundred and fifty, hundreds of eighty five thousand dollars every year.
That's good.
So.
Don't have an emergency fund for every year.
Even, even the, even the asbestos year was, I think it was, it was, it wasn't a hundred and, I don't think we didn't make two hundred thousand.
We had a second race otherwise, so.
Which we did free cash, right?
Uh huh, and it's a significant amount of free cash, but if we did it, we are probably would have been.
No, I, I know.
It's an increase of risk, it's that one way or another.
I know.
Fact that it goes into free cash might be the more bigger issue that not just allowing it to drop into back into an operating expense.
Uh, well, but it's not, I mean, that's the problem is it's not spending the idea. That's where it ends up.
Yeah, like any other.
Can we make it a reserve of all?
No.
Anyways.
What you could do is put it, you have to transfer free cash into stabilization accounts or otherwise, but that would require. Or hurts, I. I hear what you're saying, and don't be surprised if I do put some thought into it in a matter of months or first, when we start making that point, point five.
Yeah, it's just, just a thought.
Any other questions on nine B? All right.
I will move to approve. And move. The reserve fund transfer request of income as presented by the Department of Public Works. For snow and ice operations deficit in the amount of sixty six thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars and ninety three cents.
All in favor? Motion passes. Moving on to a series of contracts under item.
You're right, we got it, we got it.
All set. All right, we're moving on to ten A, uh, speaking of well for A.
Yes, so just being here is.
Thank you, sorry.
So, so part of the initial delay is based on the fact of the underground lateral drilling that connects the ground well source under the wetlands area only to our treatment plant. And of course, like anything at Maynard, significant ledge was identified within the wetland. You cannot bore for this because we couldn't drive the machine into the water or check for this. We do um. Thirty boring the best we can on the edges, you know, a significant amount of due diligence is done in advance of this. Um, unfortunately, these things um do become issues and are necessarily unanticipated, but our contract is large enough to handle change orders such as this. Um, this is one of the last potential change orders under this contract. It is in phase one of the project, which is connecting the well field, the drilling well field, connecting the well field. Piping it to the treatment plant with a recycle um backwash tank and um. I would tell you that phase one is about sixty five to seventy five percent complete. And even though phase two isn't on this request, phase two is the treatment plan upgrades and that is about ten percent started. So you may start to see change orders reduced. When we're talking about phase one and associated as they'll start to phase out and complete their contracts. And you will potentially see change orders in the future for the treatment plant process, which is Winston builders. Um, but this is a request for change order authorization approval of two hundred thirty two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars for our phase one construction project with associated construction company.
Questions?
You can.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the change order, D C O zero three. As presented with the associated construction company for the well worry water treatment plant upgrade. Phase one construction contract from thirteen sixty one. The amount of two hundred thirty two thousand nine hundred eighty dollars in authorizing the use of digital signatures approved.
Second.
All in favor? Moving on to ten B, which is the wastewater treatment.
Chair, if I just add one more caveat to that.
No, go ahead.
As we discuss moving forward with agreement on school, the potential of geothermal. Want you to understand that these are situations that may incur in that process as well. So just anticipate that large change orders when you're talking about subsurface drilling may be something that we can anticipate. Which we did in our research, but sometimes there is survey where they just can't identify. Just kind of want to think about that as a whole, just a holistic conversation of understanding that there may be implications outside of people, design, engineer, et cetera. And our green metal school is potentially anticipating some work such as.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, now, and the wastewater treatment plant H fat rehabilitation.
Yes, so we are proud that the um. Department of Public Works in collaboration with our service contract, the O L Y A. Um, we're able to acquire a grant um with NAST E P to upgrade a failed, not failing failed H V A C um. Mechanical system in our wastewater treatment facility. Currently, our contract services work without heat in our facility and have for almost a year and a half as we could not find money. To get this done. We were very grateful that this has come to us in its time. Um, and then recently at town meeting, we supported our fair of the grant through town meeting appropriation out of our sewer retained earnings. So this is the contract with um Innovis, who was awarded the contract based off of um. The grant process and the through through the O E R and D E P. Um, and this contract is uh requested to be in the amount of one hundred and fifty four thousand five hundred seventy eight based off the quote. But as um. As I've requested recently, I'm asking for the board to also also um designate town administrator Greg Johnson to act on behalf of the board. As the CEOs for the allowance of change orders up to twenty five percent. Um, at a maximum value of one hundred ninety three thousand two hundred twenty two dollars and fifty cents. I provided our funding sources. We have uh funding for all of the original base contract and any change orders that meet that twenty five. The reason that we are experiencing a lot of change orders is due to. A significant amount of volatility when we're talking about equipment availability, material availability, and just the economy as a whole. Um, based off of timelines. Able to secure previous materials that were part of the design that all of a sudden become a situation that's a six month, ten month, four month lead time. Changing those materials based on design, all of those aspects are why you're seeing a lot of changes in large scale contracts right now. Um, so we just want to anticipate that and move that along quicker.
Any questions on ten B?
I will move to accept the terms of the agreement with the Department of Public Works wastewater treatment plant H V A C rehabilitation agreement contract number one three eight nine. With Innovis Energy Incorporated in the amount of one hundred fifty four thousand five hundred seventy dollars. Who authorized town administrator to approve change orders, the total less than twenty five percent of the base contract amount, authorizing use of digital signature if approved.
Thank you.
All in favor? Okay. Next, we have the back of loader.
All right, so back again. Uh, so this is uh the procurement of a piece of capital equipment that was identified by the capital committee, also endorsed by the town industry, the Department of Public Works. Um, and then later voted on by town meeting um to acquire and replace uh John Deere backhoe with uh within the DPW's fleet. We actually currently only have one backhoe loader. It is our major primary function excavation equipment. Um, and like everything else we're seeing in, in the world today. The original quote was much larger than the anticipated quote that we are seeing today. So we're requesting the amount um. And your authorization to spend two hundred seventy four thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, we were able to acquire three hundred twenty five thousand dollars in free cash. I will say that there is some um. Some equipment that was not included in this that we will have to buy from a separate procurement. So you may see us um. Add on to the two hundred seventy four, but we will, we do not anticipate using the entirety of three hundred twenty five thousand. Once we secure, cure this product and um approve it, this should all be done prior to special town meeting. We may put a warrant article um in front of you for reappropriation of that funds to some.
Are you keeping the um, sorry, it's probably in here. Are you keeping I, the, the other bag, even though the head's twenty five?
Thank you, please.
Yeah, no. Yeah. That totally good. All right.
Any other questions on the acquisition?
I will move to approve the agreement with United Construction and Forestry for the purchase of one John Deere seven ten backhoe loader as described in. Purchase agreement zero nine six six nine five meeting in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand eight hundred dollars, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
There, all in favor? And last contract can be. An F three fifty.
Yes, so um, this is the service vehicle replacement under the water department, under the water utility. We um town meeting approved and appropriated uh our retained earnings, ninety thousand dollars. To replace one of our service vehicles. And when we're talking about quotes, they nailed it on this one. Um, so eighty nine thousand one hundred twenty nine dollars and eighty cents um to move forward with the purchase and service truck. Um, this is a completely outfitted truck, so that's not the base truck. This comes with everything. Unlike the backhoe that may still need a couple pieces of equipment that that. That sole source didn't have the ability to procure. This is uh one hundred percent outfitted and will be delivered um in usable condition. So at the end of the, at the end of that process, based off of um. Once the town takes on the truck and we approve it, if there is funding available within this article, we may look to reappropriate that as well. Um, when we're talking about this versus the backhoe, backhoe reappropriation would be general fund, free cash, reappropriation. That would have to be returned back to the water. So we would potentially re- return it back to our retained earnings and or use it for alternative equipment, most likely return back to retained earnings.
Any questions? All right.
Move to approve the agreement with Colonial Municipal Group for the purchase of one Ford three fifty truck in the amount of eight thousand one hundred twenty nine dollars and eighty cents. Authorizing use of digital signatures approved.
Thank you, all in favor? Think.
Justin, you're all set.
Well, I was. I, I didn't want to like lead your agenda, but I did want to, based off the tri board meeting and that conversation that brought up our school committee members in regards to water trucks. I just wanted to potentially talk about the correspondence that we put in there in regards to our securing a two hundred thousand dollar grant for our land service fights. To kind of give you a general overview of that.
Yes.
And I did want to update you based off of the E P A letter we also received.
That's.
I can come back.
No, no, let's do it now while you're here. Um.
We've got the P F A S letter.
That's different, right?
No, that's the E P.
What, what, um.
So it should be a notice to proceed.
Yeah, this is the, it's cheap well deep for everybody following along. All right, please go ahead.
And this is kind of while we're on water, it just seems like this, uh, we're in the right position. So. Just to kind of give a general overview of led, uh, led issue that were um entertaining in the town remainder, um, just so the board is aware. The previous lead exceedance uh was located in uh a small pocket of private property service lines. Um, we as a utility, very similar to every. Um, we as a utility, very similar to every utility in the United States. Do not have records of service land on private property, which is where the lead is in our system. So you, again, I I think I referred to this as just Dean tells me not have well, but Jeff's help may have been sorry. Uh, our water technically, and this is based off age, when it was built, how it was built, et cetera. But our water is technically in those pipes and the EPA considers that water, even though it's in private property pipes. The public utility drinking water. So that's why we're tasked with this. Um, in regards to how the EPA and EP is managing this, um they were able to really carve out a lot of the IRA funds. To start to um address lead in uh public drinking water sources. Lead is one mission. That is what that process is. There hasn't been a much grander. Situation, obviously ours is very, very minor. That is why I continually explain that those conversations are singular conversations in a very small approach. I will tell you that we had conducted a recent um. Lead test and we're well below our M C. Because the EP changed the houses, which they typically do with a rotation, and that's why we're consistently under and then. When we're discussing that, though, we were very uh fortunate to apply for a grant under the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust. Um, and we were, we were able to secure two hundred thousand dollars to conduct what is called a lead service line um asset inventory. What we'll be doing is we're actually collecting asset data on private property. And what ends up happening is the EPA is about to rule and make it mandatory that the public drinking water systems then replace service lines even on private property. Yes, so this is the situation. Um, this is why I really want to give you like that high level. Process. At that point, though, we believe in the industry that that is where a lot of federal state funding will then trigger. So this is the first step identification, typical planning. And then at that point, we're assuming that we'll receive a significant amount of money for lead service line replacement through another similar program. That being said, it was brought up the other day when we were talking about the tri board of of um. State funding, supporting issues, water, et cetera. I want to make it clear. What Sudbury received was not a grant. So the state revolving trust is a revolving fund. It's a loan program. Sometimes the EP changes their criteria within their revolving fund to allow for grants that are one hundred percent forgiven. This is one. Treatment plan operates is not. So what Sudbury received was a loan as part of the revolving fund. And their loan processes, which we explore all the time, we actually have about half a dozen loans with the S R F under our water and sewer rates. That loan process has different criteria to me. Um, the loan is typically a two percent loan, so depending on when the bond notes are, sometimes it's appropriate to go to the S R F. But recently, with all of our recent bonding. For our well foray, the rates were lower than that's our app, so that's why we approach a traditional process. I will tell you that S R F also has strict criteria where their notes are twenty years. We can amortize amortize out, excuse me, I would say that wrong. Twenty, thirty, fifty years outside our S R F. So if we're looking to financially fit a model in there, sometimes it's not appropriate to go S R F one, sometimes it is. So just want to make it clear that sometimes there's not really a saving grace when it comes to water. We explore every avenue and will address them appropriately, and this is an example of that. And I EPA is really on heavy on lead. And that's actually what they want to, what they want to eliminate more than P V Ns. This is well in advance of where they are with P V S. I will say um Kate Hogan has done a great job and and she really listens to um. People like myself and other superintendents. Um, that we are strongly pushing for S R F to turn another criteria into P V S design grants. Because it's reactionary. The issue that most locals, especially small utilities is with S R F, it's a once a year application. And if you're not prepared properly, we don't have the resources to just be designing things for applications and grant and then moving forward. Sometimes we have to be reactionary and um there's always been a hurdle with that. Alright, I believe with this one, this this is just to give you a general, I know I'm kind of rambling a little bit, but. BP is starting to change that into grants. We will be diligent in making sure that any change in the S R F to grants, we will address appropriately.
Alright, that was an important thing to say. Just one clear on. Fair enough, but I thought we were going down a different path.
The general saving grace, I just want to make.
No, no, and the and the distinction, distinction between the grant and the loan is very important to clear up too, so I'm glad you did that. Back to twelve G, this is money to assess what. The extent of. Lead in piping. On private property is.
That's correct. Yeah, so we would, so right now.
How do we do that?
So right now, the only reason that we have exceeded, so we present a list, D P has a criteria testing location. We then present all of our parcel information, which includes. Owned built prior to nineteen eighty. The EP then takes all those homes and they evaluate our distribution network and they decide where we test. So technically, we don't test, I don't think Jeff, I don't test any of the homes. We have random test samples at locations identified by the E P, meaning. Justin in the town staff doesn't identify where we test. With that being said, that criteria is what the exceedance was because there was one location that had multiple failures. So what ends up happening at that point is the E P has identified there's lead in your 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 water and there's an exceedance. So what they're looking for. Resolution here is because I think there's a huge disconnect between federal state policy and private property rights. They're going to put it on utilities and utilities are going to come up with a program to offset it.
To assess the known. Over limit, so there could still be, right? So let's say I have one in my house, but I wasn't a testing site. This would not catch that.
No, it will. We're going to survey every single house.
You're gonna, okay, that's what I would that.
That's what I said, and we'll, and we're not through traditional water.
So what does that look like to me if they're the homeowner, the average homeowner?
Natural world, so in about two agendas, you'll see this stamp that contract to do the lead service line and we'll have a conversation of what that scope looks like. We'll have a um an outreach program, what that looks like, but most of that is done through ultrasonic processes and things. Uh, other alternative means that we can identify that coming backwards.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Justin on just about anything?
Thank you, Justin.
Which one, that one?
Oh.
Oh, I said, couldn't, I haven't had a hard, I had a hard time interpreting that one. Are you talking uh?
Yes, so this is just the kind of hammer on the fact that contaminant, faulty is randomly happening. Yep, so you hear PFAS in the water.
Yep.
And our focus is to treat PFAS before it gets in our water system. This is the start of how the E P will start to mandate PFAS testing in the wastewater. Because at the end of the day, we're trying to keep our customers from drinking and contaminating. The wastewater side of that is trying to keep it from polluting natural resources. I've wanted you to know this because when we're talking about water treatment for PFAS. We in the industry on the sewer side have no idea where E P is headed with. But this is an indication, and this is what E P and D P typically do is. All the utilities start to test for this, and then they're going to start to come up with plans for M C L limits that are allowable back into them. So just so you know wastewater, our wastewater treatment, but so he dumped it to the aspect river, the remaining clean aspect of the water system. Um, so they're most likely going to make us put in a PFAS system. In the near future to reduce any PFAS found in our wastewater to reduce it into the after river. So I just wanted to kind of keep this in mind when we're talking about like all these things. I don't want sewer to be lost. David didn't lose it at tri board. I was very, very proud that she knew that was. But this is one of those things where, yeah, we're focused heavily on water because without water, sewer doesn't exist. But just know that the water and sewer bills are managed, not shipped for the water capacity. We have to, we have to fall in when it comes to wastewater levels occasionally.
Okay, any questions on H or anything else?
Yes, alright.
Thank you, Justin.
You're very welcome.
We'll jump back up to eleven, which is the Green Meadows School Building Project. I think we saw the results of the survey they put out. I don't know if there's any follow-up conversation on that. And that's coming up in six days.
Next one.
Alright, any other updates?
They haven't, they haven't heard the words, other than, other than email putting up a survey.
Okay. Uh, back to twelve correspondences, we just discussed G and H. Any other commentary on the correspondence?
Moving back to Green Meadows School for one thing, for one, I think you're doing a um. Doing a form of some sort or something? Informational thing? I like the form, all right. So, oh, sorry, but normally I know better before I.
That's okay, if I, if if I, I'll let the board know that.
Yeah, I I forget what it is, but I saw um.
Maybe.
It was in conjunction with another community group, so um.
The school, representative of the school committee, member of the council on aging, and they.
I saw, I, yeah. No, there was another one that was kind of coming up, but sorry, my apologies.
Okay.
Back to first ones.
Any comments on any of the correspondence and? Alright. I'll accept the motion.
I will move to accept and approve correspondences A through I as shown.
Thank you. All in favor? Alright.
Relative to, was there, was, was it my imagination, was there a recommendation from you to sort of, as a result of. One of the recognition letters that appeared to put the.
Yep, thank you, Dave.
And that was included in the correspondence.
Yes, it was. That's why I didn't get it hundred percent. So um. Now that that's been moved, though, this chair, if you allow, to your point, David, yes. Uh, Chris has pointed out that there is dwindling attendance and membership now at the Human Relations Committee. And so I am just recommending uh that the board consider. Designating the Human Relations Committee as dormant. I don't even know if there's any active members besides yourself and.
I'm not a member, I'm a.
There you lay it on, well, maybe the team.
So I believe it's. I I believe it's. Steve Noel.
Yep.
And I think Elizabeth from the school committee, I'll vote.
Maybe it's the ladies.
I believe she's, I believe she's a member.
Oh, so be it.
I'm not sure, but.
It's chief. But either way, it doesn't sound like it's the intention of the charge, so.
I mean, I recommend, directly, this is basically effective. We have had. A very difficult time um finding members. And as you know, Greg, because I've asked you on multiple occasions. We have had a very difficult time um establishing with Elliot. Um, who has resigned, what the um charge should be. And what the process of creating a new judge should be, whereas we, you and I believe that the charge will come. From this committee, I think Elliot was interpreting that the committee itself would create its own charge. And that was not what.
Well, that's true.
That's not, that's not what the case should be, so I.
That's true. I thought it had asked the committee to consider proposing a charge.
Yes, several months, several months ago, and a month post engagement, but you know, so. Yeah, I I would think dormant would be the way to to go until such time as we have a um. A chart and we need members operating under that chart.
Sure.
And and you know, he was the last one of the, one of the, as you did suggest in his um. His resignation was that it would um center on the, you know, and that, and that's okay, but it was just. It was difficult. You had to find people to join and participate in everything else, so um it is, I don't know what else to do.
No, town bodies sort of come in though, I mean, but and and it faces the charge, and so, right, if there's a. It that 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 body was created reactionary, it was like part of the circumstances. And so that might come again, or come about again.
I'm opposed to rebranding it either. Um, I definitely like the idea, and I think I I talked to Greg about it before. Is to possibly be branded as the diversity equity inclusion um committee as opposed to human relations committee. Because I think it speaks more to the, it's a more updated. You know, vernacular that the people are using now. And um, but I think that what we had talked about was kind of hoping that the. H R C would be able to find their way to then kind of come into that and they. Weren't able to.
I think the value of having it dormant is both to removing the body is we can reactivate it if we have.
Yeah.
A core membership that wants to help craft that message.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think.
And that, I should say.
Yeah, I think, I think you might have more to set. Under that there than the prior, and to be honest, it's bad with. I think we started with nine members and it's, if the person, you know, dropped off for personal reasons or other reasons. Um, we just weren't able to find anybody to pick up, you know, pick up where they left off or take their seat, so. Eventually, it was, I mean, the last meeting was myself. Elliot um and two, two, you know, non-members of the committee listening in, and it was, you know, that's just not. On a court. And no, it's not, it's not a forum, and and that was a meeting that took place after three, three cancellations and two moves and different names, and you know. It was just, it's just getting difficult.
Yes.
So I, I think that's what Elliot's frustration was.
I do recommend the board take a motion to designate the H R C as dormant, just for transparency sake, that that just keep it all, get it all.
So did we vote on the correspondence first? Did we?
We can make an independent motion.
Alright, and then, so I will move to designate the Human Relations Committee as dormant until a new charge band or membership is established.
All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Uh, we've been to things. We have five sets of minutes. We have town meeting, we have, we had the one off for Amory, so there's a few different things here. Um, but um, any questions on the minutes of May third, fifteenth, sixteenth. Twenty-fourth and thirtieth, and I think one of those was, we had a a placeholder for. No, that's a town meeting and then our actual meeting the night after town meeting, I got it now, so yep, pretty good. Any questions on any of the sets of minutes?
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of May third, May fifth, and sixteen, May twenty-fourth, May thirty. Twenty twenty-three as shown.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, town administrator report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just want to highlight a few things uh. Really excited, the market is open. Very good. I went shopping on Saturday. It was crowded, so it's good. And then uh, I thought it was a wonderful turnout at the Memorial Day the other day, so I was grateful to see that, it was beautiful weather as well. And particularly, of course, um grateful for the organizers that that host that are, thrilled to have that that work done. Uh, June seventeen, June nineteen, June teen, on June nineteen.
Yes.
Coming up. Um, but there will be another, uh, the board meeting is the twentieth, so it's the day after that. Um, but I really wanted to highlight the great work that the council, nation, library, the buyer, just as examples recently that they submit for the town manager's report. I mean, they, they're wonderful pictures, but all the details that they put into it, I I appreciate. They're consistently contributing the effort. Um, lastly, I do want to ask if the board has interest in uh in one of you. Um, attending insurance advisory committee meetings, so. Um, there's no expectation either way, but I'm extending the invitation. And I'll come ahead, I don't remember when the next meeting is, but I'll follow up with that. If there's any interest, it it typically ends during the day, so it's usually. Tuesdays if I call, I might have that long, but it's, it is usually during the day and and the employees are invited, so.
But monthly, or is it?
It's monthly, although we, so we sometimes skip a summer month because the paraprofessionals attend. But um, and they're some of the biggest, you know, organizations. Uh, but anyway, I was just curious if there's anyone interested now, I can provide you details or I can provide you details and see if anyone wants to attend.
I mean, I think so, I think that, given the interest that came to us a few months ago, I think it's probably important that. One of us said.
I think that was.
You could.
I can probably do it.
How about that? I will send you, and I don't know, and and then. Not all of you attendees. Uh, I will, I will send you details. Also, I mean, the the new board members in June, July, typically the board sort of redesignates any changes that they want. Okay, alright, I'll send you the deal. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Any questions on town administrator report?
I have one question, Greg.
Okay.
How did you like the um question?
I loved it. I heard there was a heat wave that I missed. Um, I uh, I, I was, you know, doing a little bit of emails and whatnot, and um, and then I heard that Stephanie Doug and the HR manager. Yes, I missed that, but I would say I was missing it that much, uh, because I was grateful to be on the table. It was, it was fantastic. Um, there was just, there was a whole day session from a. I probably won't get her title right, but I believe she's a professor at the Harvard Business School, and she gave a uh a wonderful overview of. You know, like approaches to leadership and organizational leadership that deals oftentimes with um. Psychological comfort and emotional intelligence, more so than sort of like technical um know-how. And um, it was great. And then there was a, there was a little bit of an exercise where we had to try to build.
And um it was great, and then there was a, there was a little bit of an exercise where we had to try to build. Uh there was competition on tables and management administrators all was at a bit of a competition street. And so there, so we all had to build um a tower using not possible sticks, oh spaghetti, some dried spaghetti, have you done it? It sounds, she built dried spaghetti and tape, and you had to get the marble, so my table finished first. And and it was myself and the town administrator from Stowe, Denise Rockley, and uh the town administrator of um. Herwich and and the fourth, I apologize, I hope she's not watching, recorded it fortunately. Thanks, um so it was, we finished first, we had materials remaining, our, we came in second and third. But I would say, as municipal managers, we came another bunch. And we, and I think it is fantastic, and our stayed up, so some of the towers would fall over with ours.
Very good.
Uh so it was wonderful, thank you for asking, it was great, um. And then, yeah, I I really, really good, I mean, I saw um she shall not be named. My, my, the past assistant town administrator.
Um. I'd have heard tower did.
No, I wouldn't know, I didn't look. When you looked at her tower, I'm shocked, actually, you know, I'm telling you, it didn't, if if, oh, no. Thanks, great.
Good.
Very good, any other questions on the town administrator work? Alright, chair report, um I I had an opportunity to attend the magic subdivision of the M A P C, which was hosted at Sanctuary the other day. Um and among the many topics, I think you had four representatives and the state senator there, uh of course Representative Hogan was there. And Pauline Limehead, um you know, Justin already talked about this, but he's done a lot of work in um. Uh exploring the PFAS issue in particular for for Matt and students communities, and so it's good to hear not only that previous work, but some of the planning, the next stages of that. Um transportation and housing and and a lot of, a lot of the issues that we talk about here uh were discussed, and so it's good to hear the perspectives. Um some of the other representatives that we don't get to hear and meet some of the planning staff from neighboring towns as well, who uh we don't always get to meet. Uh again, thanks to the organizers for the Memorial Day event, um I think that was uh really well done. Uh and so I was glad to be able to attend that and see the attendance there. Uh and then I was able to attend the opening uh of the Assabid Co-op Market, so congratulations to all the hard work that was put into that. Um that opening, that's been a long time coming, as as we know, um and so. Uh I encourage everyone to stop in and check out the the questions in the back deck along the river. That's it for me, Chris.
If I had a um had the opportunity to speak at the opening ceremony, the Relate to Life on Friday. Ninety-two degrees when I left my office Friday at noon, you know, it's. I get out of my car for that, and uh they were cold, unfortunately, that, I don't, I'm not sure what time it's, if at all, to get out at night, um to walk in. We're walking left inside the uh, but the interesting part about the um, we found is that we think in the last year, they passed the million dollar. Mark in fundraising, and they actually have one woman, um Diane Isker, who actually on her own has surpassed the um two hundred thousand dollar mark. Which are pretty significant milestones, which um, you know, especially for Relate to Life, so. Congratulations to those folks, I think, another great event for them, and um it's nice to, nice to be a part of it. I echo what Jeff just said about the co-op, was I didn't go to the opening ceremony, it fits my schedule, but I'm, I'm getting it. Quite sharply, so, so all the people that I know working there, too, because we had to go on, and you know. But so one of the things I thought about when I was in there, um and the only reason why I, I'm talking about that the tribal meeting came up. That we were looking for um a connection in the um media world.
Yeah.
And Lauren is there every day, I don't know if anyone has her, I mean, he would be a good job, but to uh. Read out, and I'm happy to do it someday if someone else hasn't already, and if him, or if he could suggest that's appointed, put someone that could help us to uh. You know, do some sort of media marketing for the town.
Let me, I, in terms of events and stuff.
I um, so there is a group within the Economic Development Committee that is like a comparative marketing, so I I'll hook up. I'll make, I'll make.
Okay.
I heard they're all, everyone knows.
That's fine, yeah, that's fine, everyone knows Lauren, but he's, he's there, I I know where to find him now.
I will, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll suggest it.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's, it's, it was awesome. Maybe we'll still.
Thank you, Christine.
I also, um I'll echo uh both of you for congratulating the co-op for opening, uh you know, it's one of those things that it. Started as an idea in a basement, and this is where we're at, it's, there was a lot of hard work, there was a lot of. You know, crazy boots on the ground, but um but it's a, it's a really impressive thing that they accomplished, so. Um so congratulations to everyone for their hard work in that. Um I also wanna congratulate the students of the class of twenty twenty-three for the town remainder. Um we are all proud of you, congratulations, uh I know active had already graduated, um you know, this this weekend, so. Um uh I don't know what answer was, is, but um but yeah, congratulations and uh and look forward to your next step.
Very good, David.
Everyone covered all of the issues. Um although the the market, uh my comment is, and I've said this to a few people. Um the very disappointing part is my wife works right next door and it's not good, it's not good, it's already not. Oh, she's there.
But she's not making money right now.
Right, she's there all the time, it's like, it's like a local foods, and oh my god. It's not good. A bag comes home every night.
What do you, not good, cause you're eating healthy?
Oh, no, it's just this. A bag comes home every night. She's not watching.
It's very easy.
It is easy.
This job that.
And don't go when you're hungry, cause everything looks good.
Oh, yeah. Alright, anything else?
She'll be angry after he puts down. No, nothing.
Smoke into a journal.
Second.
Uh all in favor? We're adjourned?